Okay, it is now being recorded.
I dedicate this to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice.
The microphone picked you up?
It does?
It should.
Thank you. We've got a little bit of time before the hearing is to start, which is posted for 1:15. So I will entertain a motion to take item four, new business, out of order.
A motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so we'll move now to four A, Act on FY22 Budget.
David?
Yes?
I think this was all my other budgets last week, are you ready? Level funding except for personnel. Going to be requesting that my part-time person, Heather, be paid for 15 hours a week. That's going to go through the select board yet. So that dollar value that you're looking at is going to change, and in just the rough math, I figured two weeks' worth of full-time of 15 hours a week. And then after we do the recording that we've got to do, we'll have a real number at the end of FY22, so any overage on the hours, we can transfer from 422 to 432 to cover that. We'll have a real number to move forward for FY23. I'm referring to the catalog and we've got to do with our retention funds and all that stuff. Everything else, we requested level funding, that's what I did, except for the personnel alliance, and I adjusted that accordingly per contracts, except for Heather's.
I wonder if this is why Chris didn't send it to us, he sent it to you instead.
No, actually, except for all my budgets came from Brett, so it had to be transferred to Brett. And two of my other ones came from Chris, the cemetery and tree watering question.
Excuse me, which line? So which line are you talking about for the office help?
Part-time, aye. So salary part-time, the 5107 would be $480.32 a year. That's just putting it down for two weeks' worth, 15 hours a week, so that's 30 hours. And then we have a real number as we finish the year, you know, because he's the same person, between the 422 and the 432.
Yeah.
We just do a transfer accordingly, and then we'll have a real hour number that we can submit for FY23.
Okay.
And then the top line is based on the evaluation, which the selectmen have an acting on. That one remains the same.
But should we be figuring on 2%?
Never, nope.
Well, if we figure on 0%, we're going to be off, so should we figure on 2% or?
I don't how to answer that, I'm sorry.
Quite frankly, I think you ought to budget for 2%. I don't think it would be more than that. Whether or not it's less than that, I don't know, but if you don't put enough in there, you know, it's easier to come down than it is to go up.
So for the first three lines, they're 5105, 06, 07, and actually 5131, should we go up like 2% on every one of those?
I would.
Not the overtime, no.
Not the overtime? Okay.
I mean, we're still at the discussion stage. I don't think Brett's held any meetings, has he?
No, and I already did the percentage for the full-time line, only when I did not touch this top line. 5105.
All right, so you have 2% increase on those three, and level funding, everything else, that's basically what you're recommending, Mr. Berry?
Yep.
Oh, what is 2%? Is that what's in your CBA?
The union was 2.5.
Oh, so you can't? All right, so you can't do it that way. The union is 2.5?
Correct.
So that's line 5106?
Yes, I already added their contractual obligation.
Okay, so it's only 5105 and 5107 that we're?
5107, that's what I'm recommending, with 15 hours a week. That pending the Board of Selectmen approval, because that's an increase in hours. And 5105 is last year's figures because you haven't done the vote on evaluation yet.
Okay, but for budget purposes, first of all, line 5106, we shouldn't touch because you've already included what the contract says.
Correct.
All right, so it will be, getting back to what Todd said, it would be 5105 and 5107 that we're suggesting we increase by 2%, all subject to discussion.
No, he wants 5107 to be increase in hours for Heather, so that won't be a straight-up 2%, right?
Right.
So hers will be hours plus 2%?
Hers is going to be pending. I also won't need her evaluated for her job description. That's sort of the dollar value on the clerical rate, even though she's not in the union. She's got to get reevaluated for that. That's the job duties.
Okay, so for that line, 5107, we'll just put request, increase hours, and then put evaluation, all right? So all?
So the math on that 5105 comes out with $407.69 to add to that, if you want to figure the 2%.
Well, I think, I guess what I would be wondering if was appropriate, because obviously this board's budget has to go to the Board of Health to vote on, that I would make a motion, if it's in order, that we would approve the budget for level funding except for 5105, which would be a 2% increase, 5106, which would be a 2.5% increase, and 5107 with the increase in hours and pay rate as just a matter of theory, and the final budget could then be signed on by the chairman before it goes to the Board of Health Thursday night.
Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second?
Also, it is appropriate?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Second, I'm sorry, second.
Oh, yeah, I forgot to do roll call votes, sorry. So your motion was that the 5106 line contains 2.5%, right, based on the collective bargaining?
Correct.
Okay.
So 2% for the salary superintendent line, 2.5% for the salary full-time, and the salary part-time will be based on the increased hours for the office manager and whatever her pay rate's going to be that Tom Ferry has figured out.
Any further discussion? If not, I am going to do roll call votes. Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ayes? Mr. Pilling?
Aye.
Mr. Berry? Mrs. Gulat, aye. Mr.? Mr. Ag, yeah, I just called to vote on this, to propose this budget to send on to the Board of Health. Yeah? Okay. So that covers everybody.
The Tom abstain?
So we have? So anyone opposed, hearing none, we have one abstention, Mr. Berry, and the rest of the members voted aye. Tom, does this, the other, all these other lines that I'm looking at, is there any kind of an increase in there, or is this strictly following?
Guidance to level fund everything.
Okay. My only thought is, when we get closer to the end of the year, and before we go to town meeting with final budgets, probably before we meet with FinCom, we're just going to have to check to see if there's any kind of a trend that might be going higher that we need to bring up.
We should have a trend on the full-time going down, because I want to wait until we actually go through a full cycle of hiring and basin cleaning.
Okay.
So that's going to remain there until that actually takes effect, that we have funding. So you may have quite a bit there out of the full-time line available. But I can't, I don't think it's right to surrender that yet.
What line is that in?
It's working to the full-time salary, 5106.
Well, they're doing it now, but next year, you're not, you're planning contracted.
Correct.
So where will it be in contracted? In other words, where would you plug that money in?
You have the rental leases, I can assure you that makes sense.
Okay.
You do have the contracted disposal, but that's unless it's all-inclusive. We put the contract disposal there to get rid of the duty debt.
Okay.
But we have to make sure it's all-inclusive before we tap into that.
Okay, all right, so we do know that although this is level-funded, if we're going to go with contracted basin cleaning, we've got to make some adjustments here.
Right.
Correct?
And again, that's an end term, point of order, that we should suspend the selection.
Yeah, I'm looking at my, I'm looking at my watch.
Again, as this year ends, we'll have real numbers to move forward with.
Okay. Looking at my watch, we're just a little bit late. I want to return to agenda item number three, the public hearing on Grasshopper Energy Zero Brook Street, polar, yeah, solar project. Who would like to start the discussion? Where's Todd? Okay. Okay, do you have anything, Mr. Berry, that you want to comment on? Sag, yeah? No, but that's obviously on the list, and one of the, one of the concerns was that I had with Mr. Berry. Have you seen actually a plan, a drawing of what this is going to be like if the easement is granted, and are you comfortable with it?
Yes, the plan that they showed, yes, I have it.
Okay.
At least you have it here anyways.
Okay. Including that drainage?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so, Mr. Pilling, we have returned to the public hearing on Grasshopper Energy.
Yeah, so we looked at the turning radius, sketch submitted by the engineer. Everybody can see that. So the issue, or a couple issues that kind of popped up is, and I think it may have already been resolved by Nick, I think there might have been another email, but the fire truck had to go off the pavement on Brook Street in order to be able to take a left, and the tires were basically just on the bridge, and it's a four-foot drop-off from the bridge to the bottom, so I think there needs to be a guardrail put onto that bridge. It just seems like it's really, really, really tight for the fire truck, and if they're coming in 20 miles an hour to know when to turn left, and turn right, to turn left, I think it's getting a little tight. And I think maybe a different alignment, like twist the bridge a little bit or something in order to get across will be more in line. But I think Nick has already been talked to about this, and I think has already done something else to possibly deal with that. Am I correct?
Yeah, so I came from the chief this morning, and I looked at the and increased to 20 feet. There was still enough to allow for that extra width in the right-of-way and private property owned by the applicant. So with the increased width, those issues of the tires getting too close to the edge of the, we'll call it the head wall of the culvert, now there's about a foot on each side of clearance. And it is, you know, I'm not going to say it's not a tight movement, because it is, but, you know, there is a gate right after the the culvert, so, you know, any entry into the site's going to be made slowly, and as they'll have to stop at that gate, but it is tight, but it does work based on that sketch provided and the updated sketch. I haven't heard back from the fire chief on that. I sent out a revised plan as quick as possible from when I received his email this morning, but, you know, there's been no final clarification.
Now, I get a question for you. Why is this culvert, whatever, 14 feet wide? It seems like it's really wide for that channel that's coming through there.
Well, the culvert was, is what was approved and designed by Atlantic Engineering. So that culvert was designed per Massachusetts Stream Crossing standards, as the channel is identified as an intermittent stream. So it's more of a technical item, why it's so big, but, you know, based on the length of the culvert, there has to be a certain openness ratio that's required to allow animals and critters to cross through. Now, we all have been to the site and kind of see that it's kind of a little ridiculous to have it that big, but those are the standards, and that's what was approved for the crossing by Conservation and the Planning Board.
Yeah, because those stream crossing guidelines only apply to perennial streams, so they wouldn't apply in this circumstance. But we had obviously nothing to do with any of that at the time, and our conservation agent wasn't here at the time either, so we wouldn't have been involved in it. But it does seem like it's much larger than it needs to be, and obviously much higher and everything else. But I understand if you're trying to meet those standards, why it's so big now at least, so.
One and a half times, you identified tree bed, upstream?
Yeah, so for the butters or whatever in the crowd here, that the, these stream crossing guidelines require, not only do you have your channel at the bottom, but you also have, like, land at the top of the channel for the animals to walk down underneath the culvert on either side. So it's not just a drainage ditch with water and a pipe, you have animals going through here too. Which, again, for this instance, I don't think it was necessarily appropriate, but obviously if it was already approved, we're there, but to twist it a little bit or make it a little bit wider so a fire truck can get across is kind of the holdup for a building permit. So, but yes, from an engineering point of view, the, all the water is going through this culvert without any problems, whether it's 18 feet long or 20 feet long, it has no bearing on the water moving through it.
Yeah, I have two things that I want to add to that. Hello, everyone. So, yeah, with the elevation detail that I see, it does show a four-foot difference in elevation from the height of the walking surface to the bottom of the culvert, so that would require a guardrail. The other question I have regarding guardrails is directed to the highway chief. On other drainage culverts of this size, I know that you have guardrails to protect vehicular traffic from also entering the square way or the drainage way. Would that be required here? Especially on a curve?
If we're going to go in that direction though, that's going to be the crash preparation, that's going to be a aye because of the traffic flow on that radius. You're referring to guardrail to guide the fire truck to stay in the culvert?
Well, to stop it from falling off, right?
Yeah, falling within the street layout, especially on the east side, would need to be crashed, for us to look at crash preparedness. That's going to be a unique.
So we may have to turn the corner with it or something?
Yes.
I bring this up because, as I said on this previous county council has to approve the easement or the infrastructure in the roadway layout. As part of that approval, county council may warn us about the liability about a trench four feet deep at the edge of a roadway, especially on a right or left-hand turn, whichever way you look at it. So I think a guardrail may be in order here. So, you know, and we keep flipping the size of this thing, it's going back and forth. It's sort of like we're throwing a dart at the wall, and I want to get this right before it moves to me for a building permit. Obviously, this committee has say, because it is stormwater infrastructure, so I think we need to get this figured out.
I have a question about guardrails. Those plans I looked at, the guardrails would be on the east and west side of the culvert as it crosses the ditch, so the fire trucks could get in there without going on.
Right.
Okay. What about that four-foot ditch on the side of the road to keep the traffic?
That's what I'm referring to.
Does that apply? You know, the thing about trenches?
So for those of you at home, we're talking about a guardrail being on either side of the bridge so the fire trucks don't fall off the sides. Any truck, any vehicle, but the discussion now is whether or not there should be maybe a guardrail here because of the drop-off from the wing wall, so that any cars coming down Brook Street wouldn't fall into the ditch. That's what we're referring to.
Right, and it would.
We'd kind of have to come around the corner.
Yeah, it would have to go for at least a short distance there.
You'd have a neighbor who would have handled it.
Okay, until it straightens, until the road straightens out, so the curve would have to have the guardrail, the curve on the street.
Yeah, I believe that would be tough and wrapping it around, so that would have come with all the crash.
But we're talking about going around here. Go again, the neighbor has to handle it.
Okay. I'll be with you in just a minute. Roz, do you have the names of everybody that is signed into this meeting? Okay. And when I call on you, would you first state your name and your address, please?
Lauren Bosely, 1689 Street.
All right, hold on, you're breaking up just a little bit, hold on. Laurie?
Laureen, yeah.
Oh, sorry, B-E-A-U-S-O-L-E-I-L. Laurie. Laureen, right, L-O-R-I, Laureen.
L-A-U-R-E-E-N, Laureen.
Oh, Laureen, sorry, I don't like keep calling you Laurie.
That's okay. 1680 Pine Street.
Okay, go ahead.
That map is new to me, so I couldn't figure out where, I couldn't get my bearings, I didn't see street names, so I just couldn't get bearings on it.
Okay, if you're on Pine Street going south, and you're approaching the curve that turns into Brook Street.
Right, on the map, I couldn't see it. There we go.
As you, as you start to make the turn to go on to Brook.
Yep.
There has to be a bridge, so to speak, to cross the ditch to get into where the solar panels are going to be. What we're talking about is that there should be some protection on the east and west side of that bridge, so that a fire truck or any vehicle turning into that area would have some protection and not go off the side of the bridge. So that's what we're talking about initially.
Okay.
Now, the rest of that is, so, again, you're on Pine Street, and you're going south, and you're going to turn east to go on to Brook Street. So as you pass that bridge that goes over the ditch to go into the solar farm, obviously there's a shortcut curve there, so our discussion is also about, should there be a guardrail to protect the public traveling from Pine on to Brook from going into the ditch? So that's the other fencing or guardrail or whatever we're going to call this. That's the other concern we're talking about, and it just so happens that that's the area that this easement that belongs to the Town of Dayton would be. So we've got to make sure that, as Mr. Berry said, we've got to protect the town from liability, because the way we're talking right now, there's an open ditch there, and it's four feet deep. So that's why we're having this discussion now about a guardrail. Do you have a question about that?
No, not the guardrail, but it's okay to block part of that. I know it's been declared a private way, but they can, you can block that, or is it being blocked? I'm not even sure.
We're not talking about Audrey Lane.
Okay, well, it looks like it's part of Audrey Lane there, that's why. To me, it, that's what it looks like. But has this map changed at all from the agreed plans from the Planning Board?
No, it has not. You are correct in your assessment. If you look at the right-of-way for Brook Street and Audrey Lane, this infrastructure and the guardrails that we're discussing will impact the access to Audrey Lane. I understand Audrey Lane's been abandoned, but I just want you to know that you're looking at the plan correctly, okay?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So you can block it, like you can alter it?
All right, Nick's got his hand up, and Tom Ferry's got his hand up, so.
All right, Nick, you want to address that?
Sure, just, just for the record, that right-of-way's been abandoned. So Ms. Bosely, you own to the center line of that right-of-way, that's your property, and we own the other half. So we're allowed to use that property however we see fit for the development. I mean, that, you know, as far as blocking it off, as you're calling it, yes, as long as we stay within our half and all the disturbance does not cross that midway point, then, you know, we are allowed by right to do so. The, the committee is, I believe they're still going to look to town council to, you know, get, iron out the details of maintenance and other things as part of that structure was, is within the town right-of-way, so that's town-owned property. So there's some of it on our property, which is that 20-foot, 22-foot section of Audrey Lane that's been abandoned, and then the rest is on the town property. So, and then just to kind of speak to the other members
This is town.
concerns about, about the guardrail. We have no problem installing a guardrail within the proposed head wall there. You know, it's going to be a precast structure anyways, we can easily cast in guardrail for that, so we have no issues with that. With regards to protecting the ditch, so the ditch isn't four feet, four feet deep. It's the same ditch that we looked at in the field. There are some Chevron signs that kind of point around the corner, they're going to need to be relocated. If you guys would prefer that we install some guardrail and mount those Chevron signs to that, if it's believed to be a safer configuration, we have no problem doing that, just to kind of more properly define that turn. define that turn. But those Chevron signs are proposed to kind of be just slightly modified as per the plan approved by the planning board for this development.
So Nick, if I could just jump in for a second. So when we're talking four feet high, that's from the bottom of the ditch to the top of this box culvert that's being installed here. The ditch itself is not four feet deep, but because they're building this bridge to get over it, it's from the top of the bridge to the bottom of the ditch that's four feet, and that's why it's a problem. And that's why the guardrail may need to turn the corner because of that height, not because the ditch is four feet deep.
No, we understand. And that side of the wall, if you go to the grading plan, it's kind of, it's gonna be stepping down about, until it ties into natural grade. So it's gonna kind of look like an angle coming down to feather into natural grade. It's not gonna be a straight wall and just, and just end here. It's gonna, you know, feather in. But we can also put a bollard there or some other type of protection for that corner if that's also a concern. But like I said, we have no issue putting in guardrail if that's the wish of the DPW, re-mount those Chevron signs.
First, I'd say, soon as Mr. Ferry's through, I will call on you, and then this is Bosa-Lay after Mr. Reins. Ferry?
Okay. Nick, first, first question. It is east of the proposed culvert. Right now presently, where the water flows from the south to get into the ditch, that was historically used as an eager rest to that property. Is, I just want to confirm, there's no right-of-ways there presently?
Correct. There are, there are no right-of-ways. It's all private property. Like you said, half, half owned by the Bosa-Lays and half owned by the current property owner.
No, 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 no. The side that abuts the hornets.
Southeast side.
Southeast side, north. We don't have anything detailed, no. And on our ultimate plan, we don't have any easements identified.
Great. I'd like to propose, along with the guardrail discussion, discussion, the type of guardrail. I'm thinking the wooden-type guardrail, the timber-type might be more appropriate, and that should satisfy all the different angles of concerns of any type of crash. It should be more aesthetically pleasing to the neighborhood. And I don't think we're asking a lot financially on that either. But because of that type of structure sticking up there, we're inviting something within impact of, you know, the public. So we gotta protect that. All right. So I just want to make sure we weren't blocking easement on that south, south, east side of the culvert. Okay. So, I mean, you could do the timber on both sides of the culvert, but wrap it around going heading east. Does that make sense?
We'd be more than happy to do that. That's, like you said, it's a small ask. It improves safety crossing the construction, so we would be more than happy to add that.
I can make out what you're saying.
Would you repeat that, Nick?
We would be more than happy to add the wooden guardrail as described by Mr. Ferry.
Mr. Reins?
All right. No, Mr. Ferry, the question that I was gonna ask is the same that he had just expanded upon, and that was my concern about, you know, what type of guardrail is gonna be aesthetically pleasing. And also, Tom, that would not require a crash barrier end, would it? Because it's coming around a corner in either direction as they have in the highways, an absorption end.
That the wooden timbers would satisfy those. They would be Maske UT certifiable.
Okay. That's what, that's what I thought. Thank you.
Mrs. Bosa-Lay?
Yes, actually, I want to thank them because that was one of the concerns about the aesthetics of the rail. So thank you for that, Mr. Ferry and Mr. Reins. But one question I had, where he's saying that he has the right to do whatever he wants on that half side of Audrey Lane, is that true? Is that he can do whatever he wants? Or, I mean, I'm just curious for my half.
What happened with Audrey Lane? Is it abandoned completely? Or is it? It's still not, there's still no right to it and easement rights, or?
I don't know. What did? Before we get into that, what did the planning board determine with Audrey Lane? Can any of the planning board members?
I can.
Please, Tom. Yes.
I don't recall when the years ago it was. At this point, it was when this trade came about, probably five years ago, I guess. I know I did go to town council and to get a decision on how the property was gonna be split. And we figured out, number one, it was abandoned. And in fact, is that 50% of that went to the south side ownership, and 50% would go to the north side ownership. So his property, heading west, he owns that half of Audrey Lane. They own that half of Audrey Lane to the end of his property. And the next property owner after that owns to the center also. So basically, the council's opinion was that it was 50% on east side all the way through. And I think the, there's gonna be something in planning board records of that decision from years ago. So I think I would check with Mrs. Easterday.
I can rest, Mrs. Bosa-Lay, I can rest your mind at ease, okay? If Tom is right, which I believe he is, because I remember the discussion that ensued years ago regarding Audrey Lane, the only thing they can do, they being grasshopper, do with their half of Audrey Lane is what the planning board approves through the permitting process. So whatever's been already approved is the only thing they can do. If they need to alter it during this process because of some extenuating circumstance, then they'll have to go back to planning for modification. But, but, you know, let's, let's just presume this all goes through as planned, it matches the plan, they power up, they're operational, and then they say, hey, we want to change the access, we want to do something. That's gonna have to go back to planning for an access permit, which then you'll be involved with. Okay?
Okay. But the, if I could just, the, so he's saying he could build this thing blocking their half. Am I correct? I think you said I was right with that, that it's kind of interfering with the way up, up, say, west?
Oh, the proposal?
If, my question, are we able to do something on our side?
Based on what I just heard, the answer is yes, as long as what you proposed was legal.
Yes, yes.
And didn't impact the wetlands. Let me throw that in there.
Correct. And I just want to reiterate, I didn't mean we could do anything. I think I chose poor words there, but it is private property, and as long as we, as was just stated, as long as we obtain our proper permits, then in reviews from the town, that land is ours to use. I think I used a poor choice of words. I apologize for that.
Madam Chair, if I may, just for a second, Mrs. Bosa-Lay, to grasp up of slower in regards to anything that they would like to do on their half of the property. Again, I believe that the building commissioner spoke about this, is that they would have to follow any decisions that was made and decided by the planning board. So they would have to come back, back to us if they were gonna do any other minor or possible major modifications.
Okay. Thank you.
This is Kaladonia.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Guat. Nick, if you could, I'm not sure if our office manager received the updated documents in regards to the culvert. If you could send them along to Mrs. Easterday, if she doesn't have them.
Sure, I can, I'll forward those out.
Thank you, thank you.
This is Kaladonia. Do you wish to speak on this as the representative today for ConCon?
No, I wasn't here when this was approved, but I know it was approved. I just want to make sure that, you know, the conditions are followed.
Anybody else wish to comment? So I will get the information from town council, just to clarify that. I'm going to need copies of, I think, that and that. And I'm sure he's gonna be in touch with you to get more detail. Get this clarified.
So, Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
I just, I have a question of the highway superintendent. In regards to the guy, the proposed guardrail is going to be installed, I would assume that the contractor will be in touch with the highway superintendent for, you know, what the DOT height is and that type of thing?
So. Well, that's what I was just about to say. It would now be time to talk about conditions of approval.
Nick?
So I believe we would need a driveway permit for that, and, you know, all that information regarding the guardrail and other details of the driveway being installed in the right-of-way would be included in that, in that permit package for review by the DPW, highway superintendent, or building inspector's office, whoever would point out that.
Yes, some of that would follow into the driveway permit, which goes through the building permit. It's a little bit more extenuating circumstances here, and that's why we discussed it as a group.
Understood.
Mr. Pilli?
So now would be the time to discuss conditions of approval, which I know we still have a couple things that are hanging around, but I figure now would be a good time to bring them up. We can start drafting the permit. So, that being said, this was, this is one that we've had from, I guess, I can't remember if that's, this is one we had from a different project. So condition number one would be a pre-construction meeting with the engineer, site contractor, and the Dayton Stormwater Agent prior to tree cutting and excavation. At this point, I would say the conservation agent would need to be on that now that we have a conservation agent. Install and maintain siltation control, including maintenance of the access road onto Brook Street. Provide the stormwater pollution prevention plan, providing a drainage and access road as-built plan submitted and approved prior to issuance of the certificate of completion by the building department. Stormwater agent shall inspect the drainage basin, soil classification, and water table prior to lomen seed. I know I've already done test pits out there, but I still would like to see the basins before they lomen seed them in case we need to make any adjustments. Begin to the operation and maintenance plan, long-term pollution plans, and annual reports submitted to the stormwater committee. Number seven is the stormwater maintenance 53G account. The other ones, we've been going about $5,000 per basin, one basin and then one long basin along the property lines. We may want to consider raising that amount to like 7,500 or something like that. But that would be for maintenance of the access road drainage basin, if not completed by the owner. And then number eight would then be something to do with the culvert and/or a driveway permit, which we can kind of figure out. Those are the conditions that I would recommend and these are all the others.
Nick, do you have any questions on that?
No, all those conditions seem perfectly acceptable.
So what we want to put in there for the culvert and/or guardrails is if we just wanted that they need to be viewed and approved by the DPW before construction starts or before the building permit or something?
Yeah.
The driveway permit process. I just want to make sure that access is impeded. I suppose the stormwater committee has enough faith in Tom and I to make sure that we approve the proposed design before it's constructed. So, yeah, I'm fine with that. You okay with that? So he's expanding it to four feet? Yes. No, he's expanding it to, I think, 20 feet wide, which is, yes. So, Nick, clarify for me, the recent revision you sent, Mondays are crazy around here, so just bear with us. You sent a revision to the chief today. That increased the culvert width to 20, is that correct?
That's correct. So 20, then you have the headwall. So 20 clear span, drivable aisle, we'll call it. And then we'll have the headwalls, which are gonna act as curbs also, and then we'll be mounting the guardrail to those. So I moved it up 1.5 feet, we'll call it, to the west, and a half a foot, add a little bit more space for that utility pole, a half a foot down. So that got us to 20 feet.
All right. And the guardrails along the top of the headwalls, which would stop anybody from driving or walking off the edge, that can either be face-mounted to the, to the headwall, or you can precast receivers for guardrails. Is that true?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that, that would be fine. So, yeah, we can handle that through the driveway permit and building permit process.
Very good.
Uh, Tom, this is Bosa-Lay.
This is Bosa-Lay.
This is Bosa-Lay.
Yes. The 20-foot they're talking about, does that go into their property, or is that the width? Because I thought it was like 10-foot, that's what we had to come back to last time to have it. I forgot, 10 or 12 feet. So is the 20-foot going into the property? Is that what that 20-foot is?
Yes, it's the bridge. It's, it's what's gonna cross the ditch.
Okay, so that's the 20-foot. I didn't know if they were extending it wide.
Yeah. I think Nick can probably jump in, but it's still the 14 feet to get from one side of the ditch to the other side. The 20 feet is now the width of it. The fire, it's like, you know, like, almost like a two-lane road going in as opposed to like when it was 18 feet before. Now it's gonna be wider.
So are they taking more, more land to the west?
Yes. It's gonna go two feet wider to the west. They're gonna hold the east side because there's a telephone pole there that they can't move. So they're gonna be going two feet wider to the west so the fire truck can make the turn.
And that makes it 20 feet? Because I thought last time it was 12 feet or even 10 feet, actually, I thought.
No, this, this actually shows it was 18, and they've now added two more feet since we talked to the fire chief.
The 12 feet you're thinking about might be the access road around the edge. Nick, can you strategize on that?
Yeah, I can. So I think what Mrs. Bosa-Lay's question is, when this project was approved by planning board or originally looked at before this whole right-of-way issue came up, they, the original design was using more of the Audrey Lane's right-of-way for the bridge and for the access. Now, once it was determined that it was abandoned, we didn't have rights to half of that land. So we had to bring everything on our half and within the town right-of-way. So the answer is, we're not going into your half of the right-of-way, Ms. Bosa-Lay.
No, no, I'm not. I'm not thinking that. But are you going more west?
We're going west, yeah. A couple feet, as Todd said, just to widen that out to make it wider and easier for a fire truck to sweep in and turn in. The chief had a little concern about he might rub a tire on the, on the headwall. So we widened out two more feet to give him a little extra wiggle room there, because it is, it is a tight turn, and he was a little, a little bit concerned there. So we widen that out.
Okay.
Mr. Reins?
No, my question was answered by the engineer, Mrs. Guat. Thank you.
Yep. I think I gotta put his hand down somehow. I think I gotta put his hand down somehow. Tim, can you take, oh, nevermind, I got it. There you go, I took your hand down.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't realize I was the one that was in control of putting the hand down, so.
Does anyone else wish to comment? Have any questions? Okay, so the next step will be. Is there any reason to continue it that anyone can think of? I mean.
We just need to wait until you give a town council.
Right.
And then we can, uh, send the draft conditions over to Nick, and then we'll just act with side of permits. So yeah, I don't see any reason to keep the area open.
Okay. Do you have anything, Nick?
No, no ma'am.
We're all set then.
All right, so I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
We have a motion to close the public hearing. Last offer of energy, zero degrees, second.
Second.
Nine seconds, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor. Mr. Rines.
Aye.
Mr. Pilling.
Aye.
Mr. Piers.
Aye.
Mr. Agia.
Aye.
He's going too fast.
Aye.
Kula, aye. Opposition. Any extensions? All right, so the public hearing is closed. I will get that information from town council and get it to, uh, Mr. Agia and Mr. Pilling and Mr. Ferry. So the three of you are going to have to just finalize those conditions, and we'll get them to you, Nick, okay?
I appreciate it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair, may I ask Mrs. Bosley a question, please?
Sure.
Mrs. Bosley, do you have a copy of the original decision that was written by the planning board?
I, I believe I probably do.
Okay, if you do not, I will have our office manager email you one of the originals.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Rines. Uh, Mrs. Bosley, the documents that we discussed today also are available, and if you get in touch with Mr. Pilling, uh, they could give you a copy of that if you would like it. Uh, the two copies that I, the copy that I have here of this design, uh, I am going to forward to town council so he can hopefully understand what we're asking him to do and can advise us accordingly. Is that it on this one?
I believe so.
Okay, we're going to move to.
Sorry, not to interrupt, but, um, our conservation agent needs to leave in 10 minutes, so I was wondering if we can make a motion to take 4C out of order. Thank you, Lorraine.
What about 170 Beach?
She's got 10 minutes, I don't think we're going to have a couple more.
Okay, would somebody make a motion, uh, to take agenda item 4C out of order, please?
So moved.
We have a motion in the second discussion, hearing none, all in favor. Mr. Rines.
Aye.
Mr. Piers.
Aye.
Mr. Pilling.
Aye.
Mr. Ferry. Mr. Agia.
Aye.
Mrs. Kula, aye. Go ahead on, uh, 578 Hart Street.
Want to do it? All right, so 578 Hart Street is a house that's been under construction now for about five years. Uh, the yard has been basically raw dirt. Uh, there's been a lot of muddy water washing out into Hart Street and going down the street into, uh, on the Navernal Pool, uh, two different places. And it's been a lot of mud. We've had erosion control there. We've been there trying to get him to improve his erosion control, which he has done. They are now currently in the process of bringing in the septic system, which I believe is the last step, and they're going to be looming and seeding their yard this spring, which, once we have grass growing, it should bring a lot of this to a close because then we'll be dealing with clean water and not muddy water. But until that point in time, there has been muddy water every time it rains, significant rain, there is mud coming, well muddy water coming out of the street. It's not mud, it's just muddy water that's running down the side of Hart Street. And, um, I've been in touch with the contractor and the owner multiple times, but most recently, our conservation agent has been.
I was contacted by Mr. Dua when he was handed an enforcement order by the Conservation Commission, um, to, um, cease work and hire a consultant to deal with his stormwater. So since then, um, the commission has decided that he does not have to necessarily cease work, work, but to, um, deal with the stormwater and try to make it cleaner and at least cooperate with me. So I've agreed, um, you know, he's agreed to do that, and, and we've worked together the past couple of weeks, um, to mitigate the situation. And now, um, he is putting his septic system in. I don't know if that's complete, not quite complete yet. But after each significant rain event, I asked him to continue to log, you know, any, um, breaches in the barriers and, and the mitigation or addition, you know, additional erosion controls that he's added. So he sent me lengthy emails, um, explaining the situation and giving me like timeline over the years. But, um, I am glad he is cooperating, um, but I am very concerned about the Navernal Pool and the pond, um, because that's a certified Navernal Pool, which is on the, um, north side of Hart Street, down gradient from the site, so the water runs off Mr. Dua's site, runs west through the neighbor's property down, and it comes out, and it goes underneath the neighbor's driveway in a drainage swale along the road, which is country drainage. And we have each seen firsthand, Todd and I, and, um, the neighbor across the street, Bill Fournette, who happens to be the conservation chairman, it running down the street, along the side of the street in the country drainage into the Navernal Pool, creating like a coffee-like, like look, um, in the pool, and then additionally, it crosses in a culvert under Hart Street diagonally, ends up dumping into Mr. Fournette's pond. So there's been fish kill, and we'll have to see in the spring if that certified Navernal Pool still, um, is habitat for the amphibian. I'm not going to find him at this time, but I do want him to start staying on top of those barriers.
More aggressively.
Be, yeah, more aggressive with his erosion controls. Um, he's told me he will, um, be getting in an erosion control blanket to put along the front slopes of that septic system, which should help, but there's still, um, the stone wall, you know, is not filled in, the cracks aren't filled in with concrete, so the dirt, the fill is going to continue to exit the property. At this time, I, I don't think there's any reason to fine him $300 a day, but if he doesn't cooperate, yes, he should be fined and, um, things need to progress better. And again, I think at the end of all this, we'll have to see what kind of mitigation is needed in the pool and the pond.
Other finds involved?
They can be fined, but we would probably more likely just require him to, um, maybe possibly dredge the pool or dredge and dredge the pond, um, which would be better in a lot.
Yeah, restoration would be the, the best route here. We gotta check this out in the spring to see if the Navernal Pool survives the winter or not. Uh, I will say that Mr. Dua does not have a stormwater permit because it was a single-family home, and the disturbance was proposed to be less than 35,000 feet or feet, so he never had a stormwater permit. However, because he needs to avoid a health permit, we were engaging him in his erosion control, and so that's how kind of all this started. And obviously, they say we seem to have a handle on it now. We've identified where the water's coming from, and it seems, you know, we'll know better the next time it rains, so.
You all set, Mr. Rines?
Yes, I am. Madam Chair, thank you.
Could we take 4B next?
Well, that's next in order, so.
Well, we didn't wrap up the budget, because I put that one a hole so we could have the hearing, but.
Okay, but yeah, 170 Beach, he needs to.
I think, yeah. Okay, so is there a motion to take agenda item?
Mr. Rines, this is in favor of taking agenda item 4B next.
Correct, uh, so moved, Madam Chair.
I'm calling for a vote.
We're voting now, Tim.
Oh, you're, I'm sorry, you're, you're getting the echo in there and it's tough to hear everyone in the background, that's all.
We're asking for a vote right now. Are you in favor? Yep.
Aye.
Aye.
Hey. I think some of you have seen pictures that were forwarded to me from the new owner of 170 Beach Street. The pictures, for those of you who don't have them in front of you, depict a home in the center, like what looks like a pond. The pond is, um, intermittent in nature. It depends on, uh, Mother Nature's rainfall event and the level of the pond located to the northwest of this property. His concerns are obvious. Um, he says that his, cannot use his property as intended, that he purchased it, it certainly didn't look in that way. But more specifically, he wants to, uh, do several things. As a new homeowner, he needs to put in a new septic system. He wants to widen his driveway or at least enhance his driveway, and he also wants to renovate the house, all of rights of which he has. So he contacted me, uh, specifically to discuss those items. What will happen to a septic system if the ponding continues post-installation? And what could be done, if anything, to help alleviate him from using his property? So I visited the site. Um, we don't know what the soils are because we haven't done a perk test, but I told him more than likely his septic would be raised, and his septic would be somewhat large in size, uh, because of the take and pump chamber, et cetera, et cetera. And that most of his property would be raised just during the septic repair process. If he were to enhance his driveway as part of that same, uh, septic repair plan, in other words, have the, uh, engineer of record also indicate what he wants to do with the driveway, any, um, building remodeling or additions that would impact the footprint of the house. Do that all at the same time, I think most of his ponding issues would go away just based on the fact that the elevation of the yard would be raised significantly, uh, to do those things. In doing that, though, it leaves less area for the ponding to the northwest, um, to spill over into his property. So it's going to back up the pond, which could eventually create a situation where that pond, which doesn't belong to him, uh, is going to flood out other homes in the area. So I think this committee has to take a serious look at what can be done, if anything. I know that the, uh, Lisa has gone out with Todd to take a look at it. I'll defer to her on her comments. But from, from my perspective, from both the building and the stormwater side, I think we have to tackle this in any way we can, because it's not going to go away. It's only getting worse. As climate change occurs, for whatever reason it's occurring, it's occurring, and, um, it's going to get worse down there.
Hi, what? The pond was there and the vegetation that was there, but I can imagine that, you know, it, once you, I heard that many trees were, might have been cut down. Um, once you do that, I know that, you know, you create, can create some ponding issues that way. Uh, I think that anything in that neighborhood would just need to be filed with Conservation Commission anyway. But yeah, I think, you know, some sort of stormwater control is necessary, whatever that turns out to be. We'll have to leave it up to the professionals that.
So I, I looked at where the spill over would be. Tommy to be able to look at a roadway and see the low spots. And if 170 Beach Street does his, uh, alterations, which he's actually required to do by law, uh, the spill over from the pond is actually going to go into the area where three houses currently reside. And, um, I know it will cause problems for those three houses. So when I spoke with this gentleman who owns 170 East Beach, I informed him that if he were to work with the stormwater committee, the neighbors, and, and we don't have to get into the, the complexity down there with the roads and everything, we all know what they are, that if he were willing to leave a portion of the corner of his property, uh, low, which happens to coincide with the beach area, uh, adjacent to the riverine, that maybe when this thing backs up, it can relieve in that location as opposed to down where the other houses are, had he backed that up. And then, uh, I don't know if we can even do anything to the roads to help that water along, but it needs to, yeah, it, well, it, it's not a relocation, it's filling up.
I said the, the overflow pipe you were talking about to be above the elevation of the wetland. We don't want to drain a wetland.
You guys are going to look at it on the ground, but if, uh, right now it's backing up and it's, and it's, it's flooding this guy's house out. I mean, we, we can't allow that to happen. He, as a property owner, is not going to allow that to happen. So the water's going to go somewhere, it's going to go somewhere, and it's going to, what, we know it runs towards the river, it doesn't go the other way. So we need to figure this out as a group.
I mean, asking me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it would be a dischance.
Right, it's just, it's just run out. You should soon be putting a ditch for him or a pipe. It'd be better if it would utilize the wood laying across the other side of the street, so the water's treated.
That's going away from the river. Well, that's for another, you guys can figure that out.
Exactly, exactly. A river situation that they're starting to find out is something to be part of.
Yeah, it's almost like we've worn away and something's flooding.
Yeah, well, I've cut power to the whole complex because of a storm surge, where you couldn't see anybody's grass down there. So yeah, it is subject to flooding.
Was there ever, I don't know.
All right, see you. Thank you.
Nothing, no. It almost seems like something's, I've never seen it flood that way, plus there was vegetation before. Which is gone. I was just curious if something might be bugged up that exists there and going out to the river. Well, I have my own, um, stress the road out on an annual basis.
So we may, I gravel them time to time just to keep, only if it interferes with police and fire response. Other than that, the neighborhood's responsible for the road.
Yeah, I actually, I actually think my, anyone is the roadway is a little bit higher than it used to be. And in this particular case, a few inches is a big deal. So, uh, you know, I think over the years, we've had two things. You know, catastrophe is a culmination of many, many things going wrong. You dressed out the road as you should have to help the taxpayers out. We've also had a change in the weather patterns where we have rain in the winter with soils are not absorbing water like they normally would. We're having larger amounts of rain events, rain events. And then we had the combination of the.
And then we had the combination of the reduction of vegetation, et cetera, et cetera. All of these from the other.
The highway would be ready to run that area or allow him to be ready to run that area.
We don't own the roads, remember that?
Correct. Because what I'm after is stabilization if we allow the water to flow across the road. Because that's going to be the next thing coming to the stormwater.
My public fine is in that area of the roadway where the beach is, where this water has always made its way to the river. It should have been, should have been redrilled. It should not have been redrilled.
Right, that's what I'm getting at, is who's going to add that? That's what's going to need to happen. That's still a treatment. So that's still a treatment.
Big discussion that needs to happen, but I hope, the only way I see this, get my defiance to grab, modify the laws and figure it out. Because this guy in East Beach has got the right to this property. And he's going to displace most of the water by doing a septic system, which is going to create problems for other neighbors.
So there was talk about getting an engineer to look at this, must have a solution. We have the property owner?
Well, the property owner has to engage an engineer for a second. Is add the driveway, the slab that he wants to put in for a garage, put that all on the same plan so that we were aware of it. I think what we'll find is that those modifications, all which are necessary, because he brings up a valid point, he has a child with limitations. He's concerned about his child walking through the ice, the water, it's just, it's just not feasible, you know? And we've got public health issues to consider. So all that's going to happen, what I'm saying is that if we worked with the resident of 170 and found out where the water will travel post-modifications, can we do anything legally that's allowable to allow this water to make its way to the river, which is where it wants to go, without going to people's homes?
We can piggyback on what his engineer does and then just add to it with our information.
Seems like we work with property, it's willing to work with us. When I mentioned that the corner of his property could be the corner to allow the water, when it backs up, to spill over and make its way to the river, he seemed amicable with that, which tells me we have a property owner who might work with us to deal with the problem. It's just a matter of what can we and can't we do.
So it just, I'm not aware of an actual homeowners association there or proof of anyone in charge of the, are you aware of anything down here?
Only when you have a selection meeting and tell me you want to do something.
Right, no, I mean, they say, they say so and kind of, there's no contact. Because that beach, what is called, the beachfront area is always going to be concerned when any activity is going happening.
I, you know, I, I've talked to a lot of these people, I've worked with them through the years with permanence, et cetera, et cetera. I think if we put our best foot forward and try to make the water go to where the beach area is, I don't think anybody's going to come in opposition to that. The day I was there, one of the neighbors actually sandbagged the roadway opposite their house to try to stop the water from getting to their house. So this is real, this is happening.
And sandbagged underwater.
Right.
And this is not tidal water, this is runoff.
It's stormwater.
It's stormwater.
Well, it's groundwater too, I think.
Yeah, I won't tell you. In a storm surge, it does become stormwater. But in this particular case, we're talking about just groundwater and rainfall, you know, runoff, stormwater. So I just think, I think we have a golden opportunity with a new owner at 170 Beach Street, which, except when there's a backup, is the only property that is affected that I'm aware of. In other words, the property that is on Pleasant Street with the pond, the only other property that he affects directly, unless the water comes up to, you know, exponential levels, is 170 Beach. So if he's willing to work with us, you know, have his quality of life improved, come into compliance, because right now the subject's in the groundwater, we don't know that. Then I think we have an opportunity to maybe put this to rest and let him have his pond, which is what he bought, which is the wetland, and allow spillover, whether it goes to the river or Pleasant Street, we can figure that out, but we've got to do something for it.
I'd like to see this site. I haven't been down it. Should we schedule a site visit with the property owner?
It'd be a great idea.
So that we can all get some information about what it is we're dealing with.
Sure.
I just had a question about the potential power. If you start putting the pond water into the river, there's like 300 birds over there floating around in that pond.
The overflow would have to be set like a vast subdrain, it has to be set above like the working level of the wetlands. We can't drain a wetland, so.
I don't think anybody poses a threat. Just saying that. It's got like a weak problem to get your signal on and not impact the neighborhood, which is still in right now. To answer your question, Tom, I agree with you in some way, shape or form, but the birds are in the river anyway.
Yes, sure.
Okay?
I mean, we could probably walk around it even like you just mentioned, so, you know. And it's not a daily event, it's going to be sporadic whenever we have a a major event, so.
It would seem that if the property owner, under the guidance of the appropriate town officials, can divert the water from his property in a way that doesn't violate whether it's wetlands or pools or anything else, if it's neighbor's property. It's probably the only solution to this simply because the town of Dayton doesn't own the roads. And if the road is, if the elevation of the road has changed to address this, it's a, it's a touchy area simply because in effect the town is on although certainly a public health problem, it's a private problem. We still don't have a bylaw that allows Tom to go on that in that whole area, and we got another place up in West Dayton, to maintain roads. And one of the reasons why we don't have it is because the bylaw we looked at to sort of adopt requires a financial contribution from the people living on the street. And we knew how much success we were going to have with getting that passed. We did a lot of looking at it and some, some communities even have whole committees that deal with how you deal with unaccepted streets and, you know, regulations this thick. But again, the one sticking point is this financial contribution. So that yeah, I'm sure we can work out a way to do it, but we've got to keep in mind that the town doesn't have the authority and what he's operating under is just that agreement or whatever it was that the selectman passed when we had the blow up the last time from the residents that he will plow and keep the streets open for emergency vehicles and scrape and add gravel as needed. But that's nothing more than minimum, we call, it was going to be the minimum maintenance bylaw. But that's what he's operating under without having a bylaw.
Completely agree. So that sparks a question then. Why don't we look at going the other way? And we have treatment of the stormwater because we have
Yeah, three different types of wetlands, treatment, treating that water.
Right.
Going the other way.
And eventually will make its way to the river, just a lot longer than it broke. So why don't we do that? Why don't we go that way?
We can allow it. I don't, we want to do it.
But it may be crossing a town property.
Yeah, but I think it's, it's height, right? We can allow, we can entertain allowing it. It needs to be engineered and they need to fund it and do it. At least get it through the roadway. I can't bring it from their property to the Pleasant Street.
There's another property in the way is what I think he's trying to get at.
Correct me if I'm wrong, and I didn't allow the other property, but that water, when it backs up, makes its way all the way to Beach Street, which would be west of the subject property at 170 Beach Street, right? So right now, when this happens, this water right now, if this happens, this water totally, totally envelops this property, which is the property we're talking about. We know that the water is here. This is exactly what I'm saying. When this backs up, this water comes all the way to Beach Street right here. If he were to give us an easement, why couldn't we do something like this?
Beach Street itself.
Right.
Go onto Pleasant?
Well, this actually.
This is vacant.
Right. I've seen the water come this way as well. So why couldn't we intercept it here and bring it this way?
You're better off going straight.
Okay, and bear in mind, because I know so that gives us a sum. So I know we can't drain a wetland. I'm not proposing that. What I'm proposing is when the wetland overfills, why can't we do something like this?
As long as it's above the elevation of the wetland, you can do that. Dumping it straight in the river is a different problem because of.
Is this the beach, what they call the town beach?
Yes, yes, yes.
So there should be a stretch here.
What the elevation's going to be, right. And I guarantee you, well, I don't guarantee you. Let me show you where the water's coming now. The water's coming enveloping this whole property and it's going. It wants to go this way. What happens is this is, this road is so high that it comes out this way. This is where the sandbags are. So this road has been, through the years, through natural and otherwise, has been raised so that the water no longer moves through the beach. These three properties all get impacted because the water runs down this way, all three of these houses. If he raises his property up, that's going to exaggerate that significantly to the point where they're going to, they're going to have much more increased flow. So my thought was this corner of his property, if he's willing to keep it low, and we modify the road, the water will go out this way. But knowing what I know now with the wetlands and the ducks and going to the bathroom and everything, maybe we, maybe we catch it here and bring it here, which is going to have, which is going to have miles of treatment.
Is this the house that has the light problem that?
Yes.
So you can go down Beach Street itself. You don't even have to go through that property.
Tom, what about the other, the street on the other side here?
Yeah, much, much higher.
Is path having paved?
No.
It's gravel too?
Yes.
So I get the GIS up here, you can actually see water. Almost the line you're talking about.
Yeah.
Is Pleasant, is Beach Street, is the water he wants to grab. Looks, according to this, according to the heat of this, you grab the water even closer to Pleasant Street.
It's 0.26 A, is that? Well, I know they're all strange.
They're all tiny. We have to, yeah, we have to grant them.
There's enough bird's eye view for it. It's the height of the system that's going to be the problem. And the soils are generally pretty good, so. We need some elevations before we do any of that.
Well, let me, let me tell you why.
Actually, this property here is not his. This is a separate property here.
Right, which is not available. We know that, so.
So you're going to have to grab the water here or at his property. Which might not be a bad thing depending on the elevation that's decided because it, it may not matter over here if it's going to be so high anyways. It might be back over here.
Well, if he raises his property because of what he needs to do, it's just, it's going to displace the water. So the water's going to go somewhere else. We don't want it to end up here. We want it to do either here or here, whatever we decide. It's got to go somewhere.
And it become another outflow, so we could still monitor if it would fall under handling inspection.
Well, plus, plus, if you say you have you already have a sum.
Yes, but we allow the container. And we still monitor the outflow because at that point, the town, Tom, probably, I found out, well, because it does.
So wouldn't this work best if the elevation's allowed, that just have a head?
Yes, but that's why I'm thinking over here, you may not get enough cover over the pipe. Or over here, you might be getting enough cover on the pipe to make it work. Here's the thing, you need elevations of this wetland, this road and the wetland on the other side before you can make that combination. No, no, that's not, it just, it looks like it's a.
He's doing pretty good, actually. He's been working with the pastor at the
Pastor Jack.
Pastor Jack.
I have, trying to get this pipe as high as possible to get it out of that swamp, I have just over a foot of cover. I can maintain that and I know this is higher over here than Pleasant Street.
Right.
So it might be a very minimal pitch, but the water should flow.
Yeah, but again, just as soon as we see elevations, it's easy enough to determine the way to go.
Really, the structure he wants to replace, okay, which he has a right to. His driveway, he wants to enhance because he has a child with, who's autistic, she's tripping on the rocks and stuff. His septic guaranteed is going to be almost his whole thing right here. So if he just fills this in and, you know, bring, they're going to, I think this thing's going to be high. So they're going to feather out the grade, feather out the grade. Todd maybe have a retaining wall around the front. It's a crawl space, we might not need it. We're talking about him just because of what he wants to do, giving us a complete site plan with all kinds of changes and elevations. All his, all his engineer has to do is shoot us a grade here, here, and maybe somewhere's on.
Wetland on the other side.
And we're done. We can fix this. It's all part of the same plan. I'm doing this. I think you have to. I don't think you're going to get anybody, he's not going to pay for it. He's going to raise his property and say, he wants to be a good neighbor, he does not, he does not want.
The town's allowing, right, all that regrading, well, it has to happen anyway.
Has to happen.
So the thing is going to be pointed at us, we allow it, so we don't have to.
First call's going to go to him. You allowed him to put a septic in, the water's coming over here. I can't put sandbags high enough to stop it. So I think we have to address this. It's a perfect chance to do this. And you know, this is not going to go away. This has been.
No, and it's more to it than there, it's going to, it's ill blossom. So I think the trunk line should be in Beach Street with a, you know, structure going through it, another structure with a sum. Then it goes out because then, then all the other drainage problems as it matures, you already have it.
So we're going to need a, a working, these
If he owns Beach Street, other than that, I'm saying, stay in Beach Street.
Oh, you're saying put the structure in Beach Street.
The trunk line right across because it's going to be, it's going to become a community problem anyways.
As soon as we have some elevations, then it's going to be, it's only going to be one way this is going to work. Can't have a pipe going straight to them.
Hey, you don't want to do the committee. We don't want to do the committee. It takes, with COVID, it's probably about 12 months now. I like that way there. I'd rather treat the water through the different types of wetland. I like that way there, I'd rather treat the water through the different types of land here.
Okay. I like that.
Okay, so I think the next thing is, Ross, we have a... And, if possible, we'd like the property owner to be there. So, if you make the contact and see what his availability is, we'll see when we can get the stormwater committee together, because...
He's got to be later in the afternoon, to work certain day, so...
Okay. Okay. I mean, we really need to take a look at it and see...
So, his end, theoretically, is gonna be... Septic process, engineering, all that, it's probably three or four months, if everything's fast.
Yeah. Yeah, and there's probably gonna be a filing associated with this, right?
Conservation too, yeah.
Yeah, so we definitely can keep up with this, on this level.
So, I'm guessing what you're saying is providing this all goes fully, you'll need an act of selectment with that drainage infrastructure in?
Yep. And mission and who's paying for it? He's directed.
Well, the problem is, we're actually... I think we need an easement on private property. Well, who owns Beach Street?
That'll come out.
All right, but, if nobody owns Beach Street, we will just take the easement, take the easement we need, and say if somebody ever shows up with a deed that says, "I own the pot at Beach Street, you put this thing on, you owe me money." Deal with that then.
So it's to have the main hall and a separate structure for the green, the trunk line.
I can't certainly speak for anybody, but knowing what I know down there, if you are gonna do something to help with the funding, I don't think you're gonna get pushed back to any, but...
It could even be 20 years from now, so...
Other than Concom and this committee, is there any other town board that has to get involved? Because it's all private? Okay. Tim, do you have any questions?
Uh, no, Raj. I believe the highway superintendent answered my question, and also the building commissioner, what the direction that water was gonna go in.
Yeah, and once we have a chance...
I know there's always been the question of who has ownership of the park itself, and I do have a question for the highway superintendent. Are there any drawings or documents from our engineers, plans from when any of those houses were built down there? Is there any infrastructure there or not?
Tim, not only, not only are there... What a nightmare. Not only is there a total layout, the Board of Assessors has the complete layout of that whole nightmare. Meaning nightmare, because everything is so close together, and the lots are tiny. And when, going back to when Dyton Rock Park burned down, I believe it was the person who owned the property decided it was going to be sort of a little community of summer cottages. And so, all these little plots and pieces and angles were all put down in the plan. And, lo and behold, we now have year-round residences, and the thing just kept going and going. But there was definitely a layout, because I've seen it. I saw it when... The chairman of the Board of Selectmen said, "We need to take everything by eminent domain and turn it into town roads." And that was the solution to bickering neighbors. And, at the time, I said, "You don't wanna do that, because you would have to deal with easements and buyouts, and you're talking a complete layout of streets, septic, drainage systems, paving those roads. In some cases, the streets would be laid out that if somebody walked out their front door, they'd almost be in the middle of the road." It was a real nightmare. And the residents down there, I don't know if you remember this, they rose up in force, and the meeting room at Town Hall was jam-packed, full of angry, angry people. And they were angry because the proposal was that the chairman of the board and one other member of the board were looking at taking all of that property. It got pretty hot. I spoke against it and told them absolutely not, it was a nightmare. And that's why we started looking into having this minimum maintenance bylaw that I mentioned we looked into. So, the town, Mr. Ferry, operates under a minimum maintenance... I don't even think it's a written agreement, except it would turn up in the minutes of that selectmen's meeting. And the minimum maintenance would be, those roads have to be kept open for police and fire and ambulance, which means they have to be plowed. And, Mr. Ferry is allowed to scrape and grade them as he sees necessary. So that's all the selectmen have agreed to do down in the park. So, the... That particular road, Beach Street, if nobody owns it, we won't have a problem taking it and putting in this drainage, even if somebody comes out of the woodwork later on. Because we would have it appraised, just in case, like the river bottom. If anyone says they own the bottom of the Totten River that's in Dyton. We took it by eminent domain, and if they were to turn up with a deed, we'd have to pay them, but... My colleagues are saying, and I agree with them, if what is being proposed would benefit a number of people down there, dealing with the drainage and this water problem, I don't think we would have opposition from whoever does own the property down there. So that's where we are with it. But if you have a chance sometime, you're in the building, go to the assessors' office and, on the big maps, you know, that are mounted near the wall, take a look at the layout of Dyton Rock Park. It's, you won't believe it, I mean, it's unbelievable. The fractional pieces of land down there, that there are, which were supposed to be little cottages, turned into homes. But anyhow, that's how that all came about. And, literally, if the town is ever ordered to take action, like the town was ordered to do in the north end of town, that ended up in public, with having public sewage, you're looking at a multi, multi, multi-million dollar project. So, that's why, as I say, other than the fact that everybody down there was opposed to that, the amount of money the town would have to spend just to acquire property would be prohibitive. And they all claim, they all have deeds that allows them, they have deeded beach rights to that little tiny piece of land that is on the river. And, I think everybody in the room that night said they had deeded beach rights, so that's another nightmare. That's some of the history of how this all came about, Mr. Reins.
So are we in the position right now, Madam Chair, that we are going to do a site visit in the future?
Excuse me?
Now, are we going to do a site visit?
We're gonna do a site visit.
Okay.
Mrs. Grassley will get in touch with the property owner to find out his availability, and we'll get some dates, and see when the stormwater committee can go there. Because if you're not familiar with the area, and especially since you're not here in the room and saw these little diagrams and things that were here, it's difficult to understand. We had a problem down there, other than when I was talking about maintenance of roads. So, and I just found out today that this property that is currently sitting in the middle of a small lake happens to have bought the property that we had problems with three or four or five years ago. That wasn't a drainage problem, there were multiple other problems there, but... So, a site visit is in order, so you can really see it and get a feel for it. So anyhow, Mrs. Grassley will be in touch with us, once she's able to come up with some dates.
All right, thank you.
Okay, and this will be a future agenda item. Going back to the budget, I think we're all set on this, and we probably just need to take a vote on, this would be agenda item 4A, the FY 22 budget. We probably should just take a vote to forward this to the Board of Health. Oh, that's right, okay. That's right, because his salary's in there. So I don't think we need to do anything else on this one. The next one on the old business is an update on Strawberry Fields Development. My understanding is that there's been several appeals of the decision. Mr. Hashem is coming to the Board of Selectmen's meeting tonight. He had made the request... Well, I think he called the chairman several times, and he didn't respond, and didn't take the calls. And then, Mr. Hashem sent an email to Mr. Pacheco, asking to meet with the board. And initially, the chairman said no. And I wrote back, "Come on down." And Selectman Pacheco agreed, so he is on the agenda for tonight. I'm not sure if he's coming in with his attorney, I hope he doesn't. My position was, he came to the stormwater committee meeting, we had a discussion. No, we didn't reach agreement on everything, but that was not the point. Our point was, we wanted him to know the basis law, the recommendations we made, because his attorney. And he had said, "Those aren't the rules, there's no state law, blah, blah, blah," we all heard that. And what we know is that we were basing a lot on best practices, because we are held to best practices. So, I'm not sure what's coming up tonight. I do know that, at the last meeting, we had to appoint an attorney to represent the town. Well, that didn't happen, per se. All... Mr. Pacheco objected, he said, he objected to spending over $100,000 to represent the town. I'm not sure it's gonna cost that, simply because all the discovery's been made. There's nothing new to discover. The discovery's based on the last decision of the DEP that was in favor of the Concom. And the only new thing is, so this is what they're proposing, which, in the discussions we've had, what they're proposing, we feel will be, it's not in compliance with best practices, violates certain stormwater issues, so forth, so on. So what happened at the last meeting, the chairman on my motion, and I agreed to fund counsel until this meeting, so we didn't miss any deadlines, because you know if you miss a deadline, you could lose the whole case. So... Any action that had to be taken by the town, whether it was to meet deadlines, to file papers, or whatever the next step was, was supposed to be covered by Hill Law. The other thing too is, we found out Hill Law says they can't represent the town, something about a conflict. So, I don't have information on that. I know that we had to vote to allow Hill Law to stop representing the neighbors the last time, and to appoint them special counsel to handle the appeal at DEP, which they did, and that case, as I said, that decision came back in favor of the town. So that's another thing that's gonna happen tonight. Not sure where this whole thing is gonna go. So, relative to Strawberry Fields, that's what I know about, based on the selectmen's meeting. No, I think we just gotta sit back and wait to see what happens tonight, and go from there. I think... Concom's, oh, and the other thing is, tonight's meeting, somebody will be there from the Concom. I think Lisa's supposed to be there. And I think Chadley Mello's coming. Because that was another thing, Mr. Pacheco said, "There's nobody here from the Conservation Commission to explain all this." And so, as it turned out, they were looking for that too. So we'll just keep this one on the agenda for a possible discussion, if we get any new information that would relate back to the stormwater committee's recommendations relative to Strawberry Fields. Does anybody else have anything that they wanna bring out? Okay, the next one is a 5D update on the Aggie School.
Hello, everyone. Yes, we have an update. The CSE building is just about complete. I will be issuing temporary stipend of occupancy. I thought it was gonna be late today, but it looks like it'll be tomorrow, by the time I have all the documentation in order, and the Board and Health and I have an opportunity to walk through. But I've spent a lot of time at Priscilla Aggie the last two weeks. Gilbane, the school department have done a great job, and I'm looking forward to allowing occupancy for the first of several buildings in the campus expansion and renovation project. So, it's going well.
Good. I know I saw the movie Vans on Saturday. So, is there anybody in the building?
So, members of the administration are in the building. Teachers are in the building, in limited numbers. And the plan is for students to reoccupy the CSE building, or occupy the newly constructed CSE building, Thursday.
Of this week?
Of this week.
Wow.
Yes, yes. And, you know, I wanna commend my fellow public officials who have overseen and managed this project. We're still a long way from being done, but it's been a great process to see through, and I hope you all get an opportunity to view the property, or the buildings, and the grounds, et cetera, et cetera. I'm sure Priscilla Aggie will have a big pomp and circumstance at the right time. Now's not it, but we at least wanna get them in the building, and get the renovations at Gilbert Hall moving forward. Thank you.
Jim sums it up pretty good.
And I had a conference call with the superintendent director a week ago to iron out a few things, and as usual, I commend her for the cooperation we received. And, that's added to being able to accomplish as much... That has been accomplished relative to getting that building ready for occupancy, so... Mrs. Grassley, do we have any correspondence? Public input, do we have any public? All you public out there?
Anything to say?
Okay, so, let me get my callous, so we can set it, make, for the next regular meeting. Site visit, this will be a separate one. We do have a meeting planned for February the 10th. And that's to deal with the solar farm on the Arredjo property. So, we'll let that one sit. Whether or not that'll end up being a monthly meeting, or whether or not that'll just be a continuation of the hearing. Okay?
What date was that?
February 10th.
Uh-oh. What time is that?
1:00 PM.
1?
So, if...
Yeah, 1:00 PM.
If they're not ready, if the Arredjo solar project is not ready for the test, will we still meet that day? Or is it tentative?
Right now, the only thing we said we were going to do was, we gave them more time to get ready, and to do the things they're supposed to do. If they're not ready, then... If they're not ready, then we probably won't meet that day, because we'll be looking to, we'll set a date for a monthly meeting. The other thing is.
Well, we still have a meeting, because we continued them to that date, so we still have to open it and continue it. So either way, we're going to have a meeting on that.
Okay, that's right.
Yep, oh, but they're not going to withdraw. So I think we could maybe cover some other things on the agenda and just table if we don't have time.
Yeah, if, if Ross can make the connection to the property owner. Yes, I believe you do. He works also, it may be later in the day. Well, let's, we do have a, we do have a stormwater meeting, 1:00 PM on the 10th of February, so let's leave that.
Yeah, you do have a select meeting on the 10th.
And see what happens with the site visit, okay? From the property owner, this, this will, the purpose of this meeting will be the continued hearing. And if there are some other things we can put on the agenda, fine, even if we have to put them off till the next meeting. But since we continued the hearing till that date, yeah, we just can't not do it.
Oh, Tim, I'm just seeing now your question in the chat, because I wasn't near the computer. How close is the nearest catch basin in relation to the corner of the residence property? We don't have that answer right now, but it looks like it's several hundred feet away.
Okay, yeah, I heard that Tom was trying to configure some pipes down there with Jim, so. I do have a question, I don't know if it's a question or more of a statement, but I knew that we are due for some inclement weather coming up. Whether it be rain or snow, if it does happen between now and our site visit, can we get some updated photographs to see what the difference is of, you know, that poor gentleman's probably down on Beach Street, so that we get an idea?
Wants to know if it changes as a result of the rain or staying the same. Yeah, we, we'll be out there, because obviously the conservation agent and myself have been driving by regularly, and Mr. Ferry's going to be going down there regularly now too, so. We'll keep an eye on it.
Okay, because I know that, you know, you know, we're going to do things in our best interest for all residents, and I know this is something different, it's probably not in our purview. But there's going to be a problem come sometime down there with mosquitoes, with that standing water in that pond. So I'm sure that the residents must be a little upset over that too, so.
Yeah, that, that discussion is going to go on for a little while, this isn't going to be a one and done, so.
Yeah, I'm sure.
So we're on for February 10th for the next meeting?
Yes, and Ross, would you check with Lisa? Because when we did that site visit, I think that was the location that all of the wetland flags were gone. And there was a question about whether or not they were going to reinstall them, but she said, I got to find out if your permit is expired, because if your permit's expired, there's no sense going out and putting the flags out again, because you've got to do something else.
So they have a valid order conditions right now, that was set to run out like this month or next month? Because of the Permit Extension Act, every permit's been extended until we're done with this crisis. So in theory, their permit will run out hypothetically, say June. But they may or may not be under construction by June, but either way, the permit runs out, and so they'd have to stop work if they were underway. And then they would ask for an extension, well, the commission would then say, hey, wait, your wetland mine is old, we want you to reflag that before we give you an extension. So she's like, just go flag it now and be done with it. So, and I believe that was the way they left it with them, and I haven't heard if they resolved it yet, so. But we haven't seen any new plans from them, because I think they're trying to figure that out now.
Is there anything else? Mr. Reins, do you have anything?
No, Madam Chair, I do not. Mr. Pillings just covered a discussion that I had this morning with our conservation agent and our office manager for the planning boards. That was part of the conversation this morning. And what they were going to do in regards to replacement of wetland flags, and also if their permit had run out, but due to COVID-19, there is an automatic extension, so thank you.
So does that mean you want a motion to adjourn?
Yes, sir.
I'm still moved, Madam Chair.
Aye.
Mr. Pillings?
Aye.
Mr. Eddie?
Aye.
Barry? Mr. Barry, did you ever want to stay longer? Was there something you wanted to discuss? Okay, all right, where adjourned?